About what data centers is because a lot of times people might not know really what that is talking about. So I'm gonna keep it in layman's terms and I try to go too deep, just make some broad strokes. But think of it this way, as we've now moved into definitely the technology age and even the AI age, many of us, you know, we saw how the dot coms boomed in the nineties, we saw how the internet got rolling, then we moved into social media. And now, whether it's AI or anything else, if you have a grandchild or a child, they're on a tablet, everybody has smartphones, all of these things are compiling a lot of that. So these are the centers that for instance, if you take pictures, where do those pictures go to in the cloud? They have to go somewhere. So these centers can either collect data or send it, funnel it in. For instance, if you think of a LinkedIn account, somebody has to take that information in to funnel it back out so that it's properly being utilized by the people and everywhere. So I was blessed to go two weeks ago up and do due diligence up into Northern Virginia to the Stax data center that I'll talk about again periodically throughout this meeting, to get a lot of hands-on information. I didn't want to just read what was in the paper, I didn't want to just look at what was on the news, I wanted to go here for myself so I could do my due diligence to come back and tell you what really I saw. And what I saw was a game changer for the city of Petersburg. But the goal is, can we get into the conversation? There's been a lot of misinformation out there that I would just like to kind of, you know, dispel a little bit and if need be, Joanne, I don't put you on the spot, but maybe Ms. Joanne Williams here as well, speak to, again, any misinformation if I might miss something. So again, there are city officials in here that can't speak on broader topics, but again, this is just to get the conversation going and help you understand. So what I saw was again, a state-of-the-art building, a three-foot, uh, three, excuse me, three-story high building that looks pretty much like an up-to-date office building. It just did not have windows. So there's four major concerns when you hear about data centers. One is noise, the other is energy consumption, third is water, how the water is used, and four is the approach that one residential neighborhood. Let's talk about the noise. When I went up there, I was standing literally as close as here to the street, to West Washington right here, and I heard very little. I'm talking about literally very little. Now, again, I would like to see the decibel level so that I can have the exact facts, but again, what I heard, if anybody's a resident of Ramblewood or a close suburbs area proximity to that, you've probably heard more noise at night from the steel plants. As I tell my little daughter, those are the dinosaurs over there in the woods because it sounds like they're dropping steel or something is going on. That is more noise from miles away than this data center that I was standing close to was emitting. So I would like to dispel the rumors that data centers emit a lot of noise. That was ten, fifteen years ago when they were being built. The technology has been updated, it's been changed, it's constantly, think about, anybody that have a computer, you know, every three to four years, something starts going wrong with your computer when you gotta go get a new one. Something goes wrong with your cellphone when you have to go get a new one within three to four or five years. Because the technology needs to be upgraded so they can run more efficiently. Well, now we're dealing with these state-of-the-art data centers that are not emitting a lot of noise. Let's go to the water real quick. The water is the main thing that can help with the noise. There's two types of coolants for data centers, either air or water. The air ones are the older ones that do emit a lot more noise. The water can cool these things down because again, up their servers and processes, they heat up, they need to be able to cool them down, the water is better. This is where if Petersburg is getting to the conversation, it's better for us because we control our own water and we have excess water. If you remember about ten, fifteen years ago, a little over ten years ago, we were even considering selling our water off to Hattie Mac's regional water authority. I was a part of that board that says, oh no, not even. You don't need to do that because just like we sold the dump, we see what happens when we sell off our resources that we can't control. Being that we can control our water, it is very, very valuable for the, for the data center. This is why they're putting their eyeballs on saying, hey, does Petersburg know the plan? Because I'll tell you this as a fact, if we don't, Chesterfield does, Prince George does, Denwoodie does, Richmond definitely does. Because of, which I'll get to a little bit later, the way that it can, the revenue that comes in, it can affect the tax base. And I'll get to that a little bit after I get to economic developer up here to tell you a little bit about some serious numbers about how it affects the tax base. But again, because we own and we have a little bit of, a lot of control, as you say, over our water, that's what makes us a viable candidate to host data centers here in Petersburg. Let's go to residential. Again, if you're in the resi-, uh, the Petersburg, excuse me, the Ramblewood subdivision or Ridgewood, I've been in your neighborhood for the last forty-five years. My mom and dad built that house in nineteen, sorry, nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, we finished up in nineteen eighty when we moved in. I wanted to run on my first round, elected to council in twenty twenty-one and getting ready for the seat in twenty twenty-two. I was always questioning, why wasn't that neighborhood, or our neighborhood ever, which one, the other side of those dead ends? And as I got older, as younger, I used to ride my bikes through the woods, to cut through the Halifax street to go over there to visit my friends in what I still call Hoppermanity, I was called Justin Soffler James or might even change names once again. But now it's no longer because trees have fell, have fallen down and those trees are not as healthy. You can look through those woods a lot easier than you could fifteen, twenty years ago, let alone thirty years ago. So that forest is not as healthy as it, as it once was. And even the health of the, the city's trees isn't a big topic. Go back, look at the last city council meeting from January the seventh. We had a whole forty-five minute presentation talking about how we can, again, cut down the heat of the city of Petersburg by again, looking at how our trees and where they are and what districts they are. So I would never want to cut down, uh, just this hundred and seventy-nine acres and just take it all away. I've talked to the people at the data centers and there can be, again, ways that we can put proffers in there so that they can plant up healthy trees for the walkers of the neighborhood. There's ways again, at that data center, that they could be walking trails. They're all about working with the community because again, they see that if they can come in and be, again, Virginia is the data center capital of the world, that is what it's being called. Whether it's Manassas County, King William County, or Loudoun County, they are oversaturated so they are looking to come down to this area. So again, infringing on Ramblewood, I would always want to protect it. Six months ago, I brought to you the Ramblewood expansion. That was with Ryan Holmes. Ryan Holmes wanted to come in and build a hundred-plus stable family homes, about eighty townhomes. As we had that meeting, a lot of people, for the main thing was the access into the neighborhood. Access to that hundred and seventy-nine is still on the table and the data centers have even talked about being in the conversation of building this fifteen, twenty million dollar bridge that will be needed to get to the data center. Now again, I'm not here to sell you any wolf tickets. It is about putting things on paper and going through the proper planning, zoning, and things of that sort, that's why I have planning here to talk to you about economic development. When she can come and speak to her, with her knowledge is about how that area can, again, benefit Petersburg as we again, made our comprehensive plan for twenty forty, twenty years from now. How can again, now data centers come into play? And then finally, it is about anything about environmental. Is that all that acreage actually being able to be used? That's a question that has to be done once they actually survey the land. But the goal is again, that can we get over there and actually see? But Petersburg is landlocked. Nineteen eighty-seven is when the bill actually went through that no city in the city, uh, state of Virginia can no longer annex. So we're landlocked with our twenty-some-plus square miles that we have, we cannot grow out any further. So if we have a hundred and seventy-nine acres that is viable, when does it be used? Again, I've been in that neighborhood for forty-five years. Are we going to continue and let it sit for another forty years? Now, I know that might scare a few residents, but again, my thing is, it does not have to necessarily be the whole one seventy-nine, but some of that acreage is very viable as we grow. You've seen the casino is coming, you see the pharmaceutical clusters there, we have a vibrant downtown, we have the south area down by Walmart that is still has a lot of land that could be used. So we have to maximize where is the land that we can continue to grow our city to lower the tax base and get more revenue coming in. Whether it is residential that will pull off municipal services or it is industry that will again, help us out with revenue to lower our tax service. So there's a lot of things to talk about. Will it all be talked about in one hour? Probably not, but the goal is again, to start the conversation and this is what I have you all out here for. So with that, I'll bring up our economic developer so that he can go over his thing, uh, his skill of how it can affect us as far as the economy of Petersburg. And then I'll come back and we'll save questions for the very end of this first hour. So if you have a question, please write them down and you'll be able to ask them to myself, Mr. Moore or Ms. Yoder, and get that appropriate time. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name's Brian Moore, I reside at three two eight Claremont Street. And I'd like to go over in three minutes, so.
No, continue, if needed.
Yeah, data centers are exciting projects. Way back in the day when I actually had solid black caries, but put them in for the military. So, uh, it's been a experience for this. You should have two handouts if you don't have handouts. The first one says data centers are creating surplus revenue. And we've got the other one that says a work seven meeting. Which it says B two, that's not the rocket, that's just a version of it. Somebody give that one to me. Okay. I won't be later on the first one. This actually came from the gentleman that provided the presentation. So we're very thankful for Planning Community Development, Naomi, Jared, leadership and everything else. Because we wouldn't be here without their hard work and work with these folks. So.
Can you talk into the microphone a little more?
It's a little better, sir? Okay. Yeah, all right, I just repeat, I want to thank Planning Community Development. They've done a lot of the work for the zoning tax amendment for data centers. Uh, without those, we would not be in this position that we're in. So we thank her for her hard work, her staff. Um, a lot of good stuff going on. Um, I'll let you just read that one when you have a chance. I don't want to take too much of Mr. Westbrook's time, let's go to the second one, the work seven meeting. What you have here, these are the numbers, I actually talked to a developer. The zoning tax amendment passes as Planning Community Development has proposed. They will be submitting their pre-development application. These numbers are scrubbed from their, their actual numbers where they calculated. Uh, I use the standard, um, sources of documentation. Think, uh, Mr. Curry, Wakefield and Christman, probably the most predominant with their economic development, uh, data center development guide, that's where many of these numbers came from. So I'm just gonna go over, one of the things has been the cost of land. Now, I pulled five counties, we call them the northern block, except for Chesterfield. Now, this is the price per acre. Now, if you read the first part, again, we worked, actually with the gentleman that's gonna do the data center. So six years ago, he wasn't paying three million dollars. I mean, he wasn't paying three million dollars an acre. He was paying under three hundred thousand. When things got tight, it's just like there was no supply-demand, so the price went up. So Prince William, three million, Loudoun County, that's where the gentleman on the first handout was from, three point seven five million per acre. Fairfax, two point five million, Stafford, one point eight, and Chesterfield, five hundred and seventy-four thousand. We've had some buys in Petersburg already, but we'll see what the numbers are as they go forward. Some of the factors that they said that affect the prices, whether they go up or down, is that an established market? Okay, we're an emerging market. Supply and demand, is there a lot of demand? Well, remember, we're trying to compete against, you know, the northern block and some of the other counties. We have about, what, twenty-three point one acres? Miles, excuse me, miles for the city, about twenty-three? Okay. So we're also competing against Denwoodie County. They have five hundred and seven miles, square miles. But we have some advantages. We've got some water, you don't need a lot of water, I'll talk a little bit about that point. You do need a high-tension electricity lines. In some of our corridors, we do have that, but they don't have that in some of the other areas. So we're gonna use that toward advantage. Access to workforce and employees. These places will employ people, it'd be kind of like in two phases. First, you'll have the construction jobs, then you have the installation techs, and then you have the folks that'll come on-site. A lot of these places nowadays are looking called lights-out centers, guys are just remote in. But still, I mean, the big thing, I'll talk a little bit about the numbers on the backside. Location of the property. Again, all the site selectors are looking for those high-power lines, some water, some folks are looking for natural gas lines because remember, they've got to have the generators to back up these systems. And they can't be down. They tell you it's, uh, you know, between three and five million dollars a minute, generator costs, they're not worried about that, they make sure their center stays up. Availability of the land, whether it's private or sitting on land, makes a difference to them, the process, it's all about timing. What they have is they have a contract, they have to have the center built up, systems in running by a certain date. Every day they miss, it costs them a month's worth of lease. And this is talking straight to the gentleman, uh, so I'm making sure I can give you the best information. Project requirements, again, Mr. Westbrook talked about some of the different entities. A lot of the new ones are coming out of AI. They say AI is new, but I remember it being a fortly, and I was introduced to AI in nineteen eighty-four. So you know, anything the military uses usually turns out pretty well, right? You've got the dark net? Okay. Proximity to urban centers and highways. Again, they're looking for easy access in, easy access out, amenities for people that are coming. Quality of the schools. As you know, we've been working with our schools. All my kids went to the public schools and the fact that's one of my daughter's friends right there, you see her? It's good to see you. So there are pockets of excellence in the school system. So we've just got to ensure that we can keep the mood in that and the kids are getting into the right tracks, get these kinds of jobs. Shopping centers, we can have still some great shopping centers, we're not the regional shopping hub, those still have some good centers. Near natural features such as lakes or rivers will increase the prices. I thought that one was interesting, wetlands doesn't increase the price because you can't use the wetlands. But if you're near those. Okay, let's talk about the zoning and land use restrictions. The more flexible zoning can increase the land value. So this is where Naomi and her folks have been, you know, making sure there's balance in what they're doing. So again, we're trying to get these folks in-town, we don't want to drive them to Denwoodie. Love one out there, but, you know, root for the home team, right? Restrictive zoning may lower unless there's a high demand for that specific use. Remember, we're in an emerging market, so we want to make sure that we get in there, get that first couple of projects done well, and keep moving. Also affects the shape, the size and shape of the land. Large plots tend to have, offer higher rates. The size of this entity that we're looking for, working with, fifty acres or higher. Anything under fifty acres, they're not gonna consider. Also irregular shaped lots. So if it's hard locked, a D, say, there's like an L or a, like a lightning bolt, that would probably be lower. Do you want to look for questions at the end, or? Okay, yes, sir. All right. Another factor is actually the budgets of some of these localities. Uh, we'll start with Prince William. They're at one point five billion dollars, median income's a hundred twenty-eight, and their population's right at four hundred and ninety-two thousand. Loudoun County, four point two billion, median income one forty-seven, and population about four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Fairfax, good old Fairfax, nine point nine billion, five, hundred and twenty-three, median income, population one point one million. Stafford, just add a billion, median income a hundred and five, population one fifty-six. Chesterfield, two million, excuse me, two billion, seventy-seven thousand median income, population three fifty-two. Petersburg, our budget, again, this is including grants. Uh, Ms. Williams there, she does a lot of our grant work. Biggest project we got in the city, everybody, she'll tell you, poor Creek. They get poor Creek in. Hundred thirty-seven point six million, median income forty-four thousand, and our population's right at about thirty-two thousand. So we're gonna read them, box with the big boys as they say, but I think we can do it. Just have to smarten up what we do. All right, I'm gonna go over to the next page. We're on page two of this second handout. This is the actual implementation plan that the developer will use. So they will work, first of all, they're gonna go through Planning Community Development, the pre-development process. Okay? Once they receive their approvals, you know, there's several back and forth when they're in the wood, about ten, twelve people on that team, all different departments. Once they've gone through the planning process and approved, they will need to secure the power. Power's a big deal. They say for Dominion Energy, power's out four to eight years to get power. These folks have a power solution, so they're gonna go. The other big thing, for many of you guys contractors who buy equipment, is lead times. So once they get order of the equipment, they know when the lead times, they got a good window when they know that equipment's gonna hit the site, they will begin. What they do is they build four fifty-megawatt buildings. Size and power of the building. They're gonna build that onsite for a total of two hundred megawatts. The typical structure is gonna be slab on grade and one-story. They do not do three-stories, they say the rack, weight of the racks. And what they're doing, it's easier just to go ahead and build the one slab. So, remember, the racks get heavy, it's not like, you know, cars get lighter as they get newer. The racks get heavier as they get newer because they're trying to put more processing power on the racks. Primary cooling system is closed loop, Mr. Westbrook talked about that. It's not water-based anymore, it's glycol, kind of a radiator. Okay? This process drastically reduces water consumption previously needed to cool the equipment. All right, inner power concerns are addressed within the first eighteen to twenty-four months. They've done so far, they're due diligence, so I think they've already talked to you about the substation that would be part of that pre-development review. So, yeah. Yeah. But they also may have to go to the state. Again, all that's done through pre-development, I think it's out of Planning Community Development unless it's right. Right, Jared? Just a minute. Yeah. Yeah, everything's gotta be right. Okay? All right. Based upon, once they get their approvals, the site will be online within twenty-four months. So, got two big years down the line, let's say, you know, they do it by June this year, they'll be on by June twenty-seventh. All right, let's talk about the potential revenue numbers. Again, when I worked with the gentleman, he is an accountant. What we did is we took what he thought was his high numbers and low numbers, and we estimated this is about sixty-five to seventy percent what they anticipated. Always better to try to get on or below, and he anticipates that the performance will be much higher. But we don't wanna put that out there now. Again, remember on the site, for this developer, there are four buildings. So each building is fifteen megawatts. Estimated value of each building is three million dollars. All right? Based on the real property tax, that comes out to thirty-eight thousand one hundred per building. The value of machinery and tools estimated, again, we try to be conservative with the numbers, is five hundred million dollars per building, for buil-, for buildings, median income. And there's four of those. All right? The machinery and tools tax, right at the three eighty per hundred, comes to nineteen million per building. So let's go through the total lines, megawatts, two hundred, value of buildings, twelve million, real property tax, hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred, machinery and tools tax, seventy-six million dollars for total tax revenue of seventy-six million one hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred dollars. And that's a conservative estimate. And a lot of the numbers may go up, not so much on the real estate, the building, because remember, it's just a slab up like that, but it's really gonna be on machinery and tools. So, other than that, Mr. Westbrook, thank you for the opportunity. Everyone get a handout? If you didn't get a handout, raise your hand. Uh, I'll give you one.
Thank you, everyone. And I'll bring Mr. Moore back up again if anybody has an exact question for him. And I'm just going to kind of hit on some of the things that he was talking about. So again, in the building that I saw, um, then again, it takes about fifteen acres per building and it can produce up to fifty mil-, fif-, five hundred millions, not fifty, five hundred million dollars per building. This is why if you think about fifteen acres, if there's a hundred and seventy-nine acres and they're only using roughly sixty of those acres just to get the four buildings up, that's five hundred million dollars up to our taxes. What does that really mean? Well, you're looking at, and again, we can't always compare it to Loudoun, but that is the standard that we are being, again, trying to say, if they were able to do this, what could Petersburg do? So I do have, and again, I don't have it all for a beauty, but if you go and look at the city council meeting, again, from January the seventh, you can see the whole report. And we're not trying to hide anything, but it's about a thirty-page, you know, report that you can go through and do your own due diligence and do your research so that you can back up these numbers that I'm about to tell you. Which is, uh, per data center, the ratio from initial income revenue to the cost of locality was twenty-six to one, twenty-six to one. So that means again, that they're actually being able to bring in twenty-six times per household, per, again, the cost for that locality and how they can do things. What does that really mean for us? Well, with that machinery tax that he also mentioned, it's again, just like any other piece of technology, it has to get updated every three to four years. So that means every three to four years, Petersburg continues to get more taxes. Every three to four years, another tax round, another tax round. So it's not like your old-school industry like, for instance, industrial paper or Borsehead or Galvano Steel that's in seven-four, where they build that building and we get a one-time machinery tax unless something goes wrong, maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. This is a constant turnover. That's why it's a, I would say, again, my personal thing, it's a no-brainer for how much money it can revenue for the, uh, generation. But then, what does that mean for the layman's terms? Loudoun's tax rate in twenty-twelve was one twenty-eight, a dollar twenty-eight per hundred dollars. Right now, Petersburg, we lowered the taxes a year ago, we're at one twenty-seven. Ten years later, in twenty twenty-four, Loudoun had reduced their tax rate to point eighty, excuse me, point eight seven, so eighty-seven cents per hundred. So they lowered it about almost forty percent. This is where again, I say that the tax revenue that could come in to lower our taxes, one of the things when I got on council, I never, again, as a layman that many of us probably said, how if we don't have entertainment, we don't have shopping, we at one point didn't have a lot of restaurants, we didn't have a lot of things. We have to go out to the Colonia Heights, the Richmonds, the Seven-Five-Sevens of the world to do some of the things that we want to live in our own county, but yet we have the highest personal property and real estate taxes. It never makes sense, and still it doesn't make sense. So again, as I was running, how can we lower these taxes? Databases is a good viable option, I keep saying that word, it's just an option that we're trying to put out there to say, let's look at this versus, uh, again, residential that later on, this hour, we'll come up and talk about the need for housing in Petersburg. We're not saying that with a casino coming in and other things coming that we're doing, where are these people going to live? We still have to have a balance. How can we lower these tax rates? If I think data centers would be a good answer. He also talked about location and the generators. Again, the location is half the highway, very close to eighty-five, access road, make, uh, bridge off of Halifax Road, so they do not have to come through the Ramblewood subdivision for construction. Um, and lastly, it says we're in an emerging market, I keep saying an option. People are saying, oh, well, they've already sold the land. We have not sold that hundred and seventy-nine acres, that is misinformation. But what we are trying to say is, hey, data centers, we own our land, we own our water, come in and look at us because again, the Oakwells, the Chesterfields, the Denwoodies, the Prince George, definitely Richmond, are looking to get into this market because Northern Virginia is saturated. You might ask them, what's the problem? We've heard about this. Go look at Loudoun County, they already have a median household income in the six figures. They go with Prince William, they have all their municipal services and things rolling. They were getting upset because you had people with ten, twenty acres of land, farmland. They didn't want an industry right beside them that wasn't going to do them much good. We need help in Petersburg to lower this tax rate. I'm not gonna put all my money and gamble on a casino. I need to give you some measurables that says, this is guaranteed. I don't need people stopping on ninety-five to get money from a data center. But with that being said, again, respectful of timing your questions, I'm gonna bring up Ms. Yoder to talk about how planning is being affected with this option coming in for data centers.
Thanks, council member, thanks, Brian Moore. Naomi Syaradmak, I'm the planning director for the city of Petersburg. So, as Councilmember Westbrook mentioned, we did have a presentation at the last council work session. Check it out, we had both the perspective from Loudoun County through economic development, but we also had Prince William County come out and their deputy planning director, David McGedigan, spoke to us about some of the concerns that they've been trying to address from a planning perspective. And I'll talk about how we're looking to address similar items too through a zoning text amendment that will come before council next Tuesday.
So we've been looking at data centers more recently. It's been a very popular topic among planners at planning conferences and so forth, really making it clear that they're not just a warehouse, they're not just something that's quiet, maybe draws traffic, but they have other features to them that we have to take into consideration when we regulate them. So, as we have talked about what a data center is, it really regulates content. It's where you hold all the data that you're utilizing.
It's where you hold all the data that you're utilizing in your day-to-day. What makes your life easier, um, when you're texting, when you're saving items to the cloud? So again, this is really popular in Northern Virginia, but it's attracting more attention here in Central Virginia as well. Um, there's several sites in Petersburg that are being looked at for data centers, and that's why we think it's important to kind of move forward with this text amendment, making sure we're taking into consideration items that should protect residences as well as our city parks as well. So we've talked really about the benefits when it comes to economic development, attracts businesses, diversifies.